Trishelle Gleason, Assistant City Clerk. You are hereby directed to call a special session of the City Council to be held on Monday, July 31, 2023, at 5:30 PM in the historic Federal Building for the purpose of conducting such business that may properly come before the City Council, as well as work sessions on Historic Millwork District Master Plan Update and Inclusive Dubuque and Project Hope Quarterly Updates.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome to a special session of Dubuque City Council for July 31, 2023. As a reminder to viewers and listeners, due to the nature of tonight's meeting topics, public input is not accepted. However, you may contact the City Council directly from the city website at www.cityofdubuque.org/councilcontacts. Attendance at tonight's special session is as follows. Mayor Kavanaugh.
Here.
Council members Farber.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Resnick.
Here.
Russell.
Here.
Sprank.
Here.
Wethel.
Here.
City Manager Van Milligan.
Here.
City Attorney Brumwell.
Here.
Okay. Okay. Next work session on the agenda is Inclusive Dubuque and Project Hope Quarterly Update. Alex Blum from the Community Foundation of Greater Dubuque will be presenting.
I'd be the presenters if we came bearing gifts. Pass these out.
Hey Clara, you can move wherever you want that desk to, whatever's most comfortable for you.
Okay. Thank you for having us today. Mayor Kavanaugh, City Council Members, City Manager, Ms. Burbach, and City Staff. My name is Clara Lopez Ortiz, and I am the Equity Coordinator for the Community Foundation of Greater Dubuque. Today, I will be giving an update on Inclusive Dubuque and what we have been up to recently. First, I will be talking about the 2022-2023 Community Equity Profile. The Equity Profile provides information on how all people in the community are affected by various systems. We first published the very first Equity Profile in 2015, and now this eight-month project has been updated to reflect the community today. This Community Equity Profile was a mix of both quantitative and qualitative data. We gathered this data through several components, which included publicly available data, expert insights, surveys, and community conversations. It focused on seven focus areas, which included housing, workforce, and economic well-being, education, health and wellness, arts and culture, safe neighborhoods, and transportation. So we dedicated each month to a certain topic, and the process looked like this. So there was data collection and a panel discussion at Stipple Square in partnership with TH Media, and the data collection, more of the quantitative, was done through Alex, which he will talk a little bit more here in a bit. And then throughout the month, we held community conversations, at least four, in different locations in Dubuque, and the community survey was available as well. It is important to note that the community conversations were led by local volunteers. So we had a facilitation training session where we had about 50 volunteers who were trained and helped us throughout these months. So the community itself was a great help. And at the end of each month, we did a publicized snapshot, which would keep people updated with what was going on, what information we had found, because it is such a long project, we wanted to keep the community's attention, sorry. So this is kind of what it looks like. So as you can see there, those are the ads that we had for the panel discussions. There's the survey that people could take on social media, and there you can see the community conversations. That one in particular was for Safe Neighborhoods. And as you can see, it was held at different locations in the community. And again, those locations were all organizations, nonprofits, businesses, that offered their space for us to host those conversations. Those pictures, you can see some of the community discussions that were held, and people, everybody was welcome. They could discuss different topics and what was most important for them. Overall, we had seven monthly panel discussions, 525 attendees to those discussions, 40 community conversations, 400 community conversation attendees, and 300 surveys completed. And then at the very end, after we had collected all that data, we had a culmination event, which Alex will be talking about.
Thank you, Clara. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, who stepped out for a second, but council members, Mr. City Manager, Ms. Burbach, and staff. We wanted to talk a little bit about the Data Walk, which is also reflected in the report that we just put out. The idea was, like Clara talked about, we had just spent seven months collecting not only publicly available data, but resident feedback about important issues related to equity. It's not very often that we get a chance on this scale to try to get input from community members about these different topics. And what we wanted to do was try to synthesize some of the findings, be able to put them out, and then set them up almost in a museum exhibit-like setting so that we could have community members, stakeholders, community leaders, come together and have conversations around the data to discuss what the findings were and what the way forward might be. Now, we don't have time to go through everything tonight, but we did want to touch base on just kind of a couple of the different findings to give you a sense. If there is any interest from anyone here or anyone listening, we still do have the Data Walk up in our office space in the Rocheck Building. Be more than happy to take anybody through to kind of see some of the pieces that we have there and have a discussion about what the findings were. But to talk about one of the, I'm just going to touch on three general things with Clara here tonight. And the first one being, you know, a large talking point for this Equity Profile was the change that we've seen in Dubuque. This is a graph showing the demographic changes between 1990 and 2020, according to the census, and you can really see the slice of that pie of all those different colors that has been growing over this period of time. This growing level of diversity within the community was really a leading touchstone for a lot of the different conversations we had, no matter the different area of focus on it. And it led to another of kind of very interesting questions and comments from residents. Clara is going to talk a little more on the qualitative side.
So I led our community conversations, and like Alex said, it was important to look past the numbers and actually hear from our people. Quickly, I want to draw your attention to the third bullet point, where it compares both the 2015 and the current Equity Profile, where it says we really need to start trying to get more diverse audiences to different events. As we know, Dubuque has many great events, but how do we reach those people that are usually not there but are part of our community? So that was a key point for me when that came out in one of the community conversations. Anything else?
And just quickly, one of the other really compelling things I thought was Clara actually led two conversations, one in Marshallese and one in Spanish for residents, in order to try to create an environment where people felt free to be able to express themselves and to talk about issues, which is a change from how things were done in the past. So again, speaks to that growing diversity. Challenges were also brought up, as you might expect, as part of the work. One of the ones that struck us the most and that I wanted to share with you has to do with the chronic absentee rates at the Dubuque Community School District. So this chart up here shows the percentage of children broken down by race and ethnicity, as well as low-income status, and students with disabilities, and the chronic absenteeism rate. That means the percent of children who are missing at least 10% of the year's school days every year. This is taken from Iowa, the Department of Education data. Now, you can see that pretty much across the board, or for all students, those numbers more than doubled from the 2018-2019 school year to the 2021-2022 school year. And you might be able to identify that there are certain subsets that have really seen a remarkable increase, you know, going from 46% of our low-income students being chronically absent, 67, two-thirds, over two-thirds of our Black students being chronically absent, and 80% of our Pacific Islanders reaching that chronic absent mark. Pretty shocking numbers to us when we saw them. And it's important to remember that this is students outside of school. This is even not, when they are not getting to school itself. And I think it speaks to a larger degree of the impact from the pandemic and from what we may be seeing within households and within different communities. This isn't necessarily, at least in the view of the residents that we heard, the problem of just our school district, but it reflects a lot of the challenges that we're seeing in our neighborhoods and in our home lives about families that are struggling in ways to get children back into school and to find that normalcy again.
When we talk about education, we don't just focus on our students, but also the teachers who provide that education and support for them. And a theme that I saw was how teachers needed that support as well. They were feeling overwhelmed because they were taking on different roles. And so later on, I will talk about an event that kind of, we took this from the Equity Profile and put it into more actionable steps. But anything else, Alex? I also had a community conversation with some Marshallese high school students, and high school students, they might be shy, but they're willing to talk once they get warmed up. And a lot of them said it was difficult for them to feel like they belonged in their schools. So we really wanted to hopefully go deeper into why that was, and it could be why there's a lot of absenteeism there. So that's something we can look into.
But for the third point, we didn't want to just focus on those barriers and those challenges that came up, but there was also a sense from respondents that they saw progress. One of the things that stood out to me, at least regarding this, had to do with our poverty rates. So this is data broken down by race and ethnicity for different poverty rates. And I have up here kind of put in a table that shows some of the change in those numbers. As you can see, for most of those categories, the numbers dropped pretty significantly. 26% ditch points for our Latino population, nearly 10% for our Black population between 2013 and 2020. One of the big numbers that did increase was our Pacific Islander population. I put an asterisk next to that because the data size from the previous Equity Profile was so small that I don't put a lot of stock into that, that there is a 0% poverty rate within our Pacific Islander population. So please take some of these with a grain of salt. But it does suggest a trend through a lot of these of improvements in the general poverty rate. When this number was taken, in order to go similarly with what happened with the previous profile, we were using 2020 data at that point, but using the most current 2021 data, we can see that in a lot of cases, these numbers have continued and progressed. There has still been a decline in the poverty rate within most of the racial and ethnic groups within our community, which is a very big sign of progress. Again, asterisks next to the Native American number, which dropped to 0% poverty rate, which I think might be because of a small sample size as opposed to anything conclusive. But in general, these kind of trajectory shows a very positive movement and something that I think the City of Dubuque should be very proud about in our efforts to try to combat poverty. Not where it needs to be, I don't think a lot of us would say, but certainly improvement. And a lot of that was seen in the comments by, through the community conversations and by respondents about the progress that they had been seeing over the years.
Yeah, and I would agree with what Alex said, that many people say that we have made progress. We are moving forward as a community. Dubuque is very different than when it was 20 years ago, so I think that was a big positive that came out of the Equity Profile. Okay. And we hope the Equity Profile can serve as a guide for other organizations to look at this and see what we can do, how can we move forward. And next, I do want to talk about some events that we have done. I know we talked about teachers and how they were feeling overwhelmed, and we did, we do sponsor the closing film at the Julian Dubuque International Film Festival. We always try to focus that particular closing film on something that really calls out to us particularly, that has to do with diversity, equity, and inclusion. And so the film that we chose was Teacher. This teacher film took a deeper look into what it means to be a teacher. We had over 100 attendees. We had a lot of teachers actually attend that said, you know, this really spoke to them, that was their experience, and they were glad that we were showing it to others, because it can be difficult, right? If we are not in their shoes, we might not know what they're going through. So it was a great event. I really enjoyed it. Next, we did hold an Inclusive Dubuque meeting with Dream Iowa. They are a nonprofit in Des Moines, and they envision a state where immigrant families from diverse ethnic backgrounds have access to opportunities for growth. There in that picture, she's with her daughter. Her name is Neil Vea Reyes Rodriguez, and she is actually a co-founder of this nonprofit. She is a DACA student, and she and her sister actually started this to help support other people like her, to want it to continue their studies and live here and be residents in Iowa. So we really wanted to bring them here and tell us their story. We held it at the lantern, the Presentation Lantern Center, and we had great attendance as well. I wanted to invite you to our next event coming up, if you would be able to attend on Thursday at the NICC Town Clock Center. We have invited the organization Monsoon Asians and Pacific Islanders in solidarity. Their mission is to end all forms of gender-based violence and build healthy community through transformative justice and social change. They greatly focus on the Asian and Pacific Islander community, so we are very excited to hear from them. And we will also have an online meeting for the Rural Equity Network, and the theme is inclusion through faith. So we have a panel discussion that talks about how we can be more inclusive through our faith. So as you can see, some of the theme here is creating events that talk about our immigrant population here, which is very important for us, and it's very important for me as an immigrant resident here as well, to have this events that are more informational, that our community can have the chance to learn about their experiences. And I think Alex will talk a little bit more about that.
Do we have questions first?
Oh, okay. I guess we can have questions in the middle.
Are you going to transition to Project Hope next? Is that, yeah, let's do that. I think that's a great idea.
Okay.
So, questions, discussion. Go ahead, Mr. Resnick.
Thank you very much. So thank you for a lot of data, and sometimes data is helpful, and sometimes, like you mentioned, we collect a lot of data and we're not exactly sure what to do with it. The challenges are, there's a lot of challenges out there. And I'm looking at the conclusion on page 46 here, and the conclusion that we need immigration leadership, that's from within the immigration communities, correct? And you talked about well-resourced immigrant leaders, really bringing people in their communities together and reaching out, making partnerships. So a couple of things, this reminded me kind of like the labor union model, where come together and help each other out and say, you know, we, there's a demand, we'd like to create a demand for maybe immigration leadership or a diverse workforce. And, you know, we need to build ourselves up, and then we need to ask others in the community to say, hey, we got a good thing here with this immigration group and a lot of great workers, reach out. Is that, is that one thing you're looking at doing perhaps?
Yes, and I should, I should also apologize. I passed out several booklets ahead of time at the beginning. We're going to do a little bit of a deeper dive into the Immigration Community Assessment through the Project Hope discussion and really get into that. But I think you're exactly right, and it corresponds a lot with this slide that's up there right now. Some of you may not know, I believe to the best of my ability that Monsoon here in Dubuque is the first Dubuque office nonprofit that is fully staffed by Pacific Islanders, right? Which is an incredible thing. And already, despite the fact that it is not a huge staff, and that a lot of the staff are very young, they're making a tremendous impact within the community, outside even of what would be their typical focus, which is on sexual and gender-based violence. The mere fact that we have an organization that pays and empowers and resources Pacific Islanders to be able to help their own community is making a difference that we've seen. Unfortunately, at least one of the findings from the assessment is that we don't have enough of that. Like you mentioned, you know, labor models, there's not a lot of collective organizing that takes place, or community organizing that takes place in Northeast Iowa. We rely on, for a lot of our work, these incredible community leaders within immigrant populations, but most of them are volunteers. They're untrained, they don't have a budget that they can work with, or if they're part of a nonprofit organization, that budget is usually what they have in their pocket at that moment. And that creates a lot of challenges that we're going to kind of talk a little bit more about during the Project Hope point of it. So yes, power and capacity building within immigrant populations was one of the key findings from the community assessment, because I think it's an area where, in the past, Dubuque has really struggled.
Thank you. And, you know, out in the community, we're all out in the community. I don't know that there's an antipathy really towards the immigrant community. It's more of an apathy, or I'm so busy myself, I don't know if I can care for more people, you know? And so that's what I get a lot, you know? My life is hard enough, so it's nice to have an active immigrant outreach to let people know what they don't know. They don't know how many diverse populations are people. So I thought that was a good idea. The other thing is, I always thought, well, we have some wonderful multicultural events at the downtown parks, but we have lots of parks. I would love to see where we take some of these events and move them around the neighborhood, other neighborhoods, and maybe let people know, like we owe 200 feet, 200 feet around the parks, hey, we've got this event here, and it's going to be open, and maybe we can come on out and meet some new people and have some fun. We've got some great events. But I mean, I know you're always trying to brainstorm and do that type of thing. So it's an interesting conclusion and very challenging, obviously, but we really need to do it. We need to be a welcoming community. We're going to get, that pie is going to be lots of different colors here, and we hope it is. We want a lot of people. It's a, diversity adds so much to our area. So thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, we can move on.
Go ahead, Ms. Wethel.
This might be something that's better approached in our next section, so please wait if it is. The information about absenteeism that you offered, was there anything in the qualitative data discussions that, I remember hearing this a little bit, that really keyed us into the reason for those populations of Black and Pacific Islander children and their high rates of absenteeism? Did it really directly correlate back to that difficulty belonging, or are there other things in the community and, yeah?
So I don't have a perfect answer, but some of the things that we learned through the conversations and with discussions with the school district, you know, I think we can all recognize that there's a little bit of a new normal that has been set around how parents respond to illness and sickness with their children. Prior to the pandemic, if your child had a cough, you might say, you have a cough, you know, please go to school. But now, it takes on a very different meaning, and we're much more conscious about that fact. I know with my own children, I am more willing to keep them home during points of time, the idea of, well, you know, let's just keep the home, it won't be a big deal. If you do that enough throughout the day, though, it does start to push into that chronic absenteeism. And I think that's why we see the total number, the numbers for all students, also double during that period. So it's not only isolated with these groups. However, I think you are correct that there is, we are seeing a disproportionate impact. I think a lot of that has to do with economics and socioeconomic status. Childcare has been an issue that has been brought up a lot. A lot of times, if parents have to go back to work, children will be kept home from school in order to take care of their siblings or other family members, something very common. I think there's also a cultural aspect to it as well. I know that there was a counselor who talked to me about the Marshallese community and how the reality of what happened with the pandemic and everybody self-isolating in their home really threw off the time schedule for a lot of students. There were a lot of high schoolers who were basically becoming almost nocturnal and coming to school very tired the next day, just because their, their systems were so thrown off. I think that speaks to a little bit of a fragility for some of these students, who don't necessarily feel connected with school a lot of times. And when you do make that life situation more challenging, it can very quickly roll down the hill and become a much bigger problem. In addition, and I don't know this for certain, but there might be other cultural elements. For example, I've been told that it is not uncommon in the Marshall Islands for parents to pull their children out of school for a year, right? We're doing things, we have a business, you know, because of how we view time, you'll go back to school next year. It'll be fine. This is just a normal part of how we deal with this kind of cycle of the school year. It's a very different situation than, you know, here in the United States, and something that requires an adjustment. So that's not a perfect answer in those areas, but it's a few of the different things that we've heard. And actually, I would be remiss if I didn't say the brain health challenges that came with the pandemic as well, and the impact that we have seen on students in the school district. I don't know if any of you have seen some of the data from the brain health centers at Hempstead and Senior High School. They're being utilized a lot, which is wonderful, but it also means that there is a need that the students are recognizing to utilize them a lot.
Thank you.
So I know we're going to go on to the Immigration and Community Assessment piece, and you have, you know, a very long list of recommendations in the book you handed us. I was curious about the recommendations from the, from Inclusive Dubuque and the Community Equity Profile and the things that you found. You know, one of the questions that I always jump to in, you know, in this, in the situation that we're here in as a city council is, okay, what can we do about it as individual community members, but then also as a council? You know, what can the city do as a public entity versus what can other folks within the community do? Do we have a list of specific recommendations, or do we have a general idea of how do we take this data and put it into action in some way?
Do you want to go ahead? So it's an excellent question. It's something that we are currently working with as part of the It's something that we are currently working with as part of the, the data walk and the, some of the other outreach that was done. We reached out to people and said, who would be interested in working on this, right? How can we empower local residents to say, hey, I was inspired by these conversations, I feel like I have something to add, in order to bring them together and say, okay, you're the housing group. What kind of changes do you want to see? And what do you feel that you can do as citizens working together? I think part of our feeling around this is the, the idea of civic engagement coming from these conversations. You're right, we don't want it to be just a point in time reading where we all go home at the end of day and say, well, that's great, we'll see you in five more years, where we can do this again. We want it to be an ongoing conversation and something that energizes individuals. That being said, it's very difficult to tackle seven different, you know, systemic issues like this, but we're very interested in, in trying to move that work forward and, and to try to get that grassroots level of effort. I think, and I'm hopeful that by providing some of this information and sharing out some of the findings, that there will be opportunities to make connections. Sometimes it is that serendipity, like we talked about in the, the last presentation, that can move things forward. For example, during the last presentation about the Millwork District, I was struck by a comment that I had heard when we were talking about health and wellness of a mother who said, you know, there aren't any indoor places where I could take my family for free during the winter to run around, right? When we think of places to get activity and to get exercise, there's some wonderful facilities, but, but they usually cost money. There's nowhere where we can just go and my kids can get exercise for three hours and then come back home. We feel very cooped up inside. You know, as we talk about amenities and facilities and things like that, that was just something that, that struck my mind, not necessarily a recommendation, but I think hearing from residents can often sometimes bring some of those things forward.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead.
If you don't mind. And I agree that much more needs to be done, so I don't, don't mean any of this to be an excuse. But you did see from some of the numbers that there is an impact that's being felt, a positive impact. And so in answer to your question, what kind of things can you do as a mayor and city council, you can support the creation of an equity profile, and that's one of the reasons they're here, because you did that. You can create a poverty prevention reduction program and then create a four-member staff whose job is to get out there and make it happen and partner with the community. You can support a multicultural family center from staffing and facilities. You can have an Equity and Human Rights Commission and Department who is out there looking at equity and human rights issues on an active basis. You can create housing incentives, so more housing gets created. And you'll remember just in the last round of State of Iowa funding, where they accepted applications for limited funding to create low-income housing across the state, they awarded eleven projects across the entire state of Iowa. Two of them were in Dubuque. And so those are quality applications that are being submitted to fill a need. You can support organizations like the Dream Center and the Fountain of Youth, and you support both of them financially and in many other ways. You can have park and rec programs that are in the neighborhoods and have free meals partnering with the Boys and Girls, or the Boys, yeah, Boys and Girls Club, so that children have a place to go to recreate and to still, and to get a meal. You can spend a couple million dollars to improve the major park in the lowest-income neighborhoods, Comiskey Park. And I know that people can tell you, including the one who lives right across the street, that that place is crowded every night now because of the investment the council's made. So you are doing things, you're doing a lot of things, but more needs to happen. I'm certainly not arguing that's not the case.
And thanks, Mike, for that reminder. And you did too, within your, within the report, you said some of the things that, you know, we have seen some progress in some ways. I think, and, and please forgive my impatience on some of these things, because it's just the way I tend, I tend to feel sitting here, is that if, you know, we have, if we have really good data like this, let's, let's go for it. Let's figure out what we can do and, and really get it done. And I, and I hope that we're always pushing for that, and I think we are. I was just, so that's why I was curious, is just, you know, I hate to see, I just, I absolutely hate to see people feel, people state that they, they do not feel welcome in, in a city that I really don't want anybody to feel that way. And if there's anything that we can do, I want to make sure that we're doing it. So I guess my, the point in my question is not to overlook the, some of the good things that we're doing, but to think, okay, if people still feel this way, and we're never going to make everybody be welcoming, not every single person in any city is never going to be, you're never going to get everybody to be welcoming, right? But is there something that we can do as a community specifically to make sure that we're moving in that direction? So it's good to point some of those good things out, but then also just to, you know, see if there's anything specific that I might have been missing in the, in the report to try and push that forward. Okay, good discussion, thank you very much. Let's, let's go ahead and move on to the Project Hope piece and the immigration assessment.
Thank you. And I'm not sure if for the record, I gave my name before, I apologize for just jumping in, but I'm Alex Bound, the Director of Advocacy, Data and Learning at the Community Foundation. And actually, I'm very grateful to be able to come as part of Project Hope and, and talk to you today about something that we did connected with Project Hope that has been very meaningful for me personally. It's something that we've been working on for the past three and a half years and has shaped how I've come to know Dubuque and how I've been able to learn about my home here. So I'm thrilled to be able to talk a little bit more about the Immigration Community Assessment. You should all have a copy in front of you. And it's kind of broken down into three parts, but we'll discuss that a little bit more. The first question, and I think we know a little bit about this, is, is why immigration? Why this assessment? Up here is a chart showing the cumulative migration for Dubuque counties. So the blue line is domestic migration. That means the number of people cumulatively over the past eleven years who have either been moving to Dubuque County from other counties in the U.S. or have been moving out of Dubuque County to other counties in the U.S. And you can see we had very strong growth up till about 2015, and then according to the census, those numbers have declined very rapidly. The green line shows international immigration, which is, and migration, which has been increasing at a much more regular and high extent. And this is actually, you know, this graph may be shocking, but the, the numbers for Iowa are even more stark. You can see the blue domestic migration line there between 2010 and 2021, and then the green international migration line. Between these two years, 2010 and 2021, about forty-six percent of the City of Dubuque's population growth during that time can be attributed to growth in the foreign-born population. And for the Community Foundation's seven-county region in northeast Iowa, you know, from Allen McKee down to Clinton, ninety-seven percent of the population growth between 2010 and 2021 can be attributed to growth in the foreign-born population. This is simply a demographic reality for our region right now, is that the fastest-growing populations that we are seeing within our communities are immigrant populations. Now, this introduces an interesting paradox, right? Because this comes with a huge amount of opportunities. These families and individuals are bringing a dynamic growth to our communities, both in terms of the diversity that we're bringing in, like we talked about before, but also economic growth and what they mean for our economy right now. And they tend to be younger demographically, and so they are bringing more children, more families. If you look at the percentages of our school district and the growth in children who are either foreign-born or who have parents that are foreign-born, that number has more than doubled within the past eleven years here in Dubuque. However, there are also barriers facing these communities, as we can, as we can likely guess. They have a higher poverty incidence. Many of them are underemployed within our communities. There are a number of academic challenges that we are seeing, like was shown in the Inclusive Dubuque section on chronic absenteeism. And most importantly, there is still a disconnect between a lot of our immigrant populations and the larger Dubuque community, including service providers. And that means our fastest-growing populations, who can be so dynamic, are not being efficiently plugged into the opportunities and the resources and the services that we have here in the community. Now, because this is Project Hope-related, I also want to talk a little bit about that poverty reduction and economic mobility. So here is a charting of all of the poverty rates, broken down by racial and ethnic group in the City of Dubuque. You can see that by far the highest number here is our Pacific Islander population, as well as some of the other groups that have the largest percentage of immigrants, which include the some other race, according to the census, and the Latino population are also both above average. When we look at median household and per capita income, part of the reason I want to bring this up is also because there are discrepancies, but we often talk in terms of median household income. You can see here that the median for all households across Dubuque is fifty-eight thousand dollars, fifty-nine thousand dollars. And so you might look at, for example, the Latino, Hispanic or Latino origin number and say, well, it looks like poverty is not a problem. And we actually had a lot of people come up to us as part of the data walk that we did and say, hey, this does not reflect my community. What we wanted to also point out here is the per capita income, meaning the income for divided by the number of people within that community, which shows what might be the reality for multi-generational households, because we know that a lot of our Pacific Islanders, a lot of people in our Latino community live in multi-generational households that might have multiple income earners. And so when you start to look at it from this lens, you can see, you know, discrepancies far below the average for our Hispanic and Latino households, for our Asian households as well, being below average, and, you know, most strikingly for our Pacific Islander population as well. Foreign-born residents within our region have a increased likelihood of living in poverty. They generally earn less than what are termed native residents by the census, meaning that in many cases they are underemployed, they're not in those same job categories that we would think of, and there's a higher percentage of them making less than thirty-five thousand dollars a year. And all of this seems to show that these barriers are having an impact on those families. So again, when we think about how do we take our fastest-growing populations and make sure that these barriers aren't there so they can hit those opportunities and they can be that same dynamic engine for growth and for diversity within our community. So into this setting comes the Immigration Community Assessment. Now, this was started back in nineteen, twenty nineteen, and actually came from the Immigration Forum, which was a, a convening that was started by some of the women-religious here in Dubuque. They recognized that there are a lot of different organizations and individuals working with immigrant communities, but they weren't necessarily working together. They weren't talking to each other, they weren't discussing the larger systemic issues. And so they called everybody together for meetings and had a great discussion, but found it difficult to get traction when you're only meeting once every six months. So the point was proposed, if we're going to work collectively on this, we really should start it the correct way and start with an assessment. We need to understand what are the priorities, what are the assets within our communities, what are the barriers, and what are some recommendations so that we can move forward? And so this is where the Immigration Community Assessment comes into play. I do want to point out that this research took place during the pandemic, which was not an ideal time for face-to-face focus group interviews with immigrant populations. And so there were a lot of shifts. It was actually, though, the silver lining on this was that it became a much more active assessment. It felt irresponsible to build relationships and to collect information to save for a large report down the line when people were in crisis right there. So with the support of the City of Dubuque and with a lot of our sponsors, we shifted to becoming more actively involved. The assessment itself includes a list of some of the different projects that we're involved in. I've listed a few of them here, but to give you an example of what they look like, I want to talk about the underlined one, which is the Marshallese Community Connector. So this story really starts with what is the Marshallese Health Fund. Now, as a lot of you may know, at the beginning of the COVID pandemic, our Pacific Islander population was hit by far the hardest of any population within the state. By my, some estimates that I've heard, about one percent of our Dubuque County population had died because of the pandemic by May of 2020. And a lot of Pacific Islanders were very scared and very worried about this. This was also a period when, because our Pacific Islanders are what are called COFA migrants, they are able to freely live, travel, and work in the United States without needing a visa. But during the 1996 welfare reforms, they were left out of those reforms. My, my best guess is that it was just merely an oversight, but it meant that they were removed from having SNAP benefits, they were removed from TANF and other programs, and most importantly, they were removed from Medicare and Medicaid. So you have a population that is suffering the most from the pandemic that does not have access to health insurance at that point. There was a local physician, Dr. Janice, who saw this among his patients and decided to take action. And he started a GoFundMe to help this community with medical bills at this point, just, you know, an incredible example of somebody stepping up at the beginning of the pandemic. The Community Foundation came in and supported him, taking over this run and doing more fundraising, till I believe we had around sixty-five thousand or seventy thousand dollars built up into this fund. Now, one of the big challenges was being able to administer it, which proved difficult because one of the first conversations that I had was with a local hospital who said, this is great, I have a patient right now who has an unpaid medical bill that could really use this. And I said, fantastic, how much is the bill for? And they said, a hundred thousand dollars. And it became very clear to me, first of all, that that wasn't a feasible solution for that, but secondly, Dr. Janice started this fund to help Marshallese families, not necessarily to backfill the charitable giving or the, the offsets of local healthcare providers. In the same way, we determined that, you know, the social determinants of health, things like housing and food provision were really important. It didn't make sense if your bills were paid if you were kicked out of your house the next day. And so the, the use of this fund became much expanded, but we didn't want to use it to say, replace a program that the City of Dubuque was running, or the County of Dubuque was running. It wasn't to try to backfill those funds, even though we thought they were valuable, it was to be a, a item of last resort to be able to help Marshallese families who could not get help elsewhere. And so we built out a long procedure, this is who you contact for medical bills, here's the next step, here's how we go from there, ways to be able to connect to the different sources of funding that we found in the pandemic. We translated that document into Marshallese, we gave it to community leaders, and we said, this is great. And then for about three or four months, nothing happened. We didn't hear anything. We knew that people were suffering, but I wasn't getting calls at my desk saying, hey, we have somebody who needs help. And it was really, you know, a realization for me and a failing for me, realizing you can't try to condense the medical and hospital system in Dubuque and expect an untrained volunteer leader who's got a nine-to-five-day job, who speaks English as a second language, to be able to navigate that system for other community members. Going to community leaders and saying, hey, you figured this out in order to get people there, wasn't working. I mean, I don't understand how to navigate hospital bills half of the time, and I studied it for this project. So, so having that expectation for our community leaders wasn't working. What we needed was individuals with cultural and language skills who were trained in the healthcare system and how to navigate it, and who were compensated for their work. So this could be their primary focus. So into this space, we called together a lot of partners, and through a partnership with the Visiting Nurse Association, with staff from the City of Dubuque- with the Visiting Nurse Association, with staff from the city of Dubuque, with HACAP and with the Community Foundation, we were able to raise funds to appoint this woman as a Marshallese Community Connector at the Visiting Nurse Association. Her name is Nikki Lenja, and her job was to help members of the Marshallese community be able to navigate the health systems here in Dubuque. And I'm happy to say that after that initial bout of funding, we helped the VNA apply for another grant, and they have been able to make her a permanent member of the organization going forward. That's what we were really thinking about in terms of not just having a fund of resources to be able to help families, but to try to address a systemic issue, this idea that Marshallese families were not able to navigate our healthcare system, how can we put something in place to be able to resolve that system? So that's just kind of an example of some of the work we did. But now, moving to the report itself, it's really broken down into three sections that you'll see in the booklet in front of you. There's the executive summary, there's the implementation guide, where we have a lot of the key findings, as well as an appendix, which is a mapping research project that we did, and then finally, a list of recommendations. All of this is also up on our website in digital form so that it can be easier to navigate, so if anybody's listening online and wants to go find it, they can find it from dbqfoundation.org. We have the whole thing up there. The report itself is laid out in four sections. One, an introduction that talks about some of our local communities. Two, how do we do ongoing collaboration around these systemic issues? Three, building connections with immigrant communities, which we discussed a little bit before. And then four, a deeper dive into some of the different issues facing immigrant communities. Each of these sections is broken down into a subsection, and in general, we have over 50 different recommendations that stem from the community assessment. This is a lot to go through, but, so we're not going to touch on all of it tonight, but if there are questions about any specific part, I'm more than happy to answer them. But first, I want to talk a little bit more about building connections with immigrant communities, and especially, you know, in hopes of addressing the question that Mr. Resnick had earlier. Building connections, we realized, is such an important element because there are so many barriers that are creating that disconnect between local immigrant populations and the larger community. They can come from language, culture, a lack of trust. Geography was one of the big ones. The idea of, we have a lot of immigrants living out on the west side of town, where there aren't necessarily a lot of service providers, is that acting as a barrier to them to be able to get connected to services and programs, in the same way that we're not necessarily having some of those cultural programs in parks and in facilities scattered around town. They tend to be centralized, like Mr. Resnick said. Now, this disconnect just reduces the efficiency of the resources and the services that we already have. It makes everything that we are set up to be able to do more difficult. And I know, I think that a lot of us recognize that Dubuque is a resource-rich community, but sometimes those connections are the challenge, and that is even more so with immigrant populations. So as part of the assessment, we look at four key areas for how to be able to improve this. One is around outreach, how can nonprofit organizations and service providers and others be able to reach out to immigrant communities to build those relationships? The idea of navigators like Nikki at the VNA, who can help people navigate through these different systems that we have in place. Cultural events is an important connector. One of the main things that immigrant communities mentioned was their desire to be able to share their culture with the larger community, and to be able to share it with their children and make sure that cultural traditions aren't being lost with younger generations. So that was a very important finding for a lot of immigrant populations. But the one that I want to dive a little bit deeper into is the idea of capacity and power building. This is the idea of being able to identify power and resources and capacity within immigrant populations so that individuals can help themselves. The reason this is highlighted is, like I said before, I believe it to be the area where Dubuque has been the weakest. Throughout the pandemic and other times, a lot of the services and work we've done have relied on amazing community partners, people who have moved mountains. But the truth is, they are unpaid most of the time, they are untrained, they have limited resources, and they have a lack of connection and authority to be able to do the work on their own. It is often programs designed by people at the Community Foundation or another service provider that they're implementing as opposed to something that originates from within the community. All of that creates a number of problems. The first is bottlenecks. If you have, if you are relying on one individual who's got a nine-to-five job and is working as a volunteer and doesn't have an infrastructure backing them up, there's a huge difficulty to be able to reach any kind of scale working through that type of situation. It also creates a key individual risk, which we've actually seen a lot with our Latino population over the past few years, where you'll have an individual who become recognized as a connector, people will begin reaching out to them for services, they'll get burned out, quit, and now we're back to ground zero. We'll have lost a lot of the ground that we've built over that period of time. This can also lead to a lack of representation, both because when you're having volunteers do services and implement programs all the time, they're not serving in that capacity to be able to speak for their communities, so there's a lack of representation that way, but also because there may be a lack of representation from within the community itself. A big finding is that our immigrant populations are not monolithic. They are not a black box where one community leader speaks for everyone. This was an issue that we, I think as a community, learned the hard way. Several years ago, there was a lot of work that was done with one of the Marshallese churches, you know? Outreach through faith institutions is a great way to be able to connect to communities. There's a lot of good work that was done, funds that were raised with a pastor who is a terrific person and who really believes in his community and wants to help. The challenge, though, is that we actually have eight Marshallese churches at this point in time within Dubuque. And at the time, it was seven, and the other six didn't feel that the resources were being utilized for their churches in the same way. They said, he's not our pastor, you know, what about the investment in our part of the community? And it was an important learning that we had, that identifying one key community leader who is working as a volunteer means that you might be missing a lot of the immigrant population and not building those connections in the same way. So the assessment has some different recommendations for how to try to address this. One of the biggest ones being having sustainable and effective nonprofit organizations based within immigrant communities, people who are being paid to serve their own communities and to be able to lead the work and come up with plans themselves. I'm very happy to say that there's already been progress, not only with Monsoon, which is a state-run, statewide organization, but has already had a huge impact in our community, but there are others trying to work. I actually have a meeting next week with a group of Marshallese women who are trying to start a 501(c)(3), representing Marshallese women within our community. The group is called CAAC. They are incredible, and, you know, speaking to democratically elected individuals, the four chairs were elected in a vote that I believe included 234 adult Marshallese women, which, at least according to the census, is well above 100% of the adult female Marshallese community, which, you know, read into that what you want. But what an incredible display of civic engagement from this community to be able to represent these women, to work on their behalf and be able to connect them to services and resources. Another of the highlighted areas here is around the idea of a natural helper program. This involves taking key volunteers, people who want to give back to their community, and connecting them with service providers, providing them with training, and then compensating them for their time, maybe in terms of a stipend or an academic certification. I want to say there was an article in the newspaper, in the Telegraph Herald, just this week, about NICC and their community connector model. This is actually a prime example of this recommendation. They actually moved forward and went ahead with the idea before we could release the report, which is, you know, it's actually wonderful, is what it was. We were part of the advisory group planning it. And that program is not only a natural helper program, but it is one of the ones that takes the idea of compensation most seriously, and I'm very excited for what this program can do, having people with relationships, language, and cultural skills being trained and then compensated for their work to connect people from underserved communities into the NICC and Opportunity Dubuque system. That's a fantastic model that we're piloting right now. Each of these ideas, though, the general idea behind them is, don't just try to build relationships and cultural knowledge for people who have power already, that's very important, and it's something that we should do. But just as important is the idea of building power for those who have the relationships and the cultural knowledge to begin with, so that they can serve their own communities. Moving on from there, and please, if there are pressing questions, feel free to jump in at any time, but I'll leave time for questions at the end as well. We tried to cover seven different issue areas as part of this assessment, from case management to health, housing, translation, interpretation, legal assistance, education. There's not necessarily time to talk about all of these. The assessment lays out 10 priority recommendations that are seen as things that are very valuable and achievable at that time. I want to talk about one of those with you today as kind of an example, and that's the idea of employer toolkits and assistance for hiring and retaining immigrant workers. So immigrants are among our fastest-growing populations within the community, but the data shows that they're also often underemployed. We have an extremely low unemployment rate here in Dubuque, it's 2.6% the last time I checked. There are numerous good jobs out in the community, so we have fast-growing populations that are underemployed, good jobs that pay a family-sustaining wage, and yet, we're lacking this connection. Local employers continue to struggle to be able to hire from these communities, and when they do, they struggle to be able to retain them. For example, I know a number of years ago, before I came, there was an example of a large organization here that tried to hire a bunch of Marshallese individuals, you know, a terrific program, the CEO was very excited. They did hire a number of community members who all left about a month later. And, you know, a year afterwards, people said, why, what happened? Why didn't this work out so well? There are a number of reasons, but one of the primary ones was that the organization was using an email-focused new employee onboarding system that a lot of their Marshallese employees didn't understand and didn't know how to use. And so they sat there, not engaging with the employee onboard system, they didn't complain, because culturally, that's not what they do, and a month later, after not doing anything, they quit. That's the kind of disconnect that sometimes can happen, not anything malicious or unwelcoming necessarily, but from a lack of cultural understanding from both sides on how to be able to make systems that fit new employees. So actually, as part of this work, just a few months ago, we had a team of graduate students from MIT who came into our community to research this exact topic, right? How can Dubuqueers help local employers better hire and retain immigrant employees? These graduate students came through a program called USA Labs, and they're being able to put together a research paper that I'd be happy to share with any of you if you're interested. But some of their findings included immigrant employees saying that a lot of local, they feel a frustration at what was termed a lack of a merit-based approach. Many of them felt like they weren't being rewarded for the work that they were doing. They may be training new employees or working almost as a supervisor, but they weren't being compensated because of language skills. At the same time, they might be blamed for instances more, they might be, feel like they're being unjustly treated or pointed out. And in a lot of cases, when an immigrant employee is feeling that way, they're, again, not going to raise that to the CEO, they're not going to make a fuss, they're going to get frustrated, they're going to stew, and then they're going to quit, which is a loss for both sides of the situation. In addition, they pointed to a lack of cultural competency, and by that I mean with policies and procedures, like from that example earlier. A lot of local businesses don't necessarily know how to structure some policies and procedures in a way where immigrant communities are able to really thrive and be successful employees. From businesses, they learned that there is a strong desire to recruit and retain immigrant community members, but there's a disconnect from those communities as well. They say, yes, we would love to hire from these communities, but we don't know how. Where are they? How do we find them? In addition, they uncovered that there are often different needs within organizations. For example, a CEO might have one feeling about hiring from the Marshallese community, but the needs of the HR staff might be very different. And unless there's a policy that is really crafted, so it can be a plug-and-play type situation for those HR requirements or for a supervisory role, there's going to be a lot of barriers for successful employment. So potential students, the MIT report includes a number of case studies from different organizations around the area, but one of the big ones that it comes forward is the idea of building some of this cultural competency for employers, right? This has to be something that is useful for all parts of a business, not just the CEO, but for HR staff and for others, and it's most effective if it's a community-based solution. If we ask every individual employer, we want you to redesign yourself so that you can work better with Guatemalan immigrants, that's, that can be a big ask, and a lot of organizations, while they'll want to do it, will put it on the back shelf, say, I'll get to that next week, and then never get around to it. Being able to have a capacity within our community to be able to engage and consult with and help revise these policies and procedures could be very impactful. And then as the final point, I want to quickly talk about this idea of ongoing collaboration and what do we do with this report going forward? So when we think about collaboration within Dubuque, within our community, there are kind of three different levels that we're looking at. The idea of general supporters at the top, everybody who's concerned about immigrant populations, specialized groups who are focusing on a very specific project, and then in the middle, this strategic level, this kind of systems level that we're working with. For general supporters, this is something that the Immigration Forum, run by the Dubuque Sisters, is going to be picking up and is going to be handling at about twice-a-year level. There are a number of groups that work on that specialized level, like the Pacific Islander Health Project Advisory Group, or Dubuque Unidos, or LULAC, these different organizations that are focused on specific populations or topics. But in that strategic area, we didn't necessarily have something going forward. So what we wanted to do, because systemic issues require a collaborative solution, we tried to think of a strategic collaboration that could fit this. Now, there are two problems with this. The first is around scope. Immigration is such a huge issue, how do you try to make any movement at all with such big questions, ranging from housing to legal issues to education? It's just too much. And then secondly, there is an inherent power imbalance. To be able to help this collaborative process work, you need to include members from immigrant communities, but having a Latino mother sit down at the same table as the chief of police, that's a power imbalance right there. And if you don't recognize it and try to address it, it can lead to poor experiences for people and a lack of trust. So we tried to develop a model that was project-based, that could focus both on big goals and smaller projects, that really, really, really focused on immigrant participation as a key element, that tried to still inform the larger community and connect back with that top level, and that had the ability to respond to incoming crises, because what the pandemic showed us is that a lot can change in a short period of time, and we need to be able to respond to new opportunities and to new challenges as they come up. So we have four different recommendations within the assessment, but I want to touch on this purple one here, which is the idea of convening a Better Together Committee. So this would be a committee that has regular meetings and that strategic collaboration using stakeholders and immigrant leaders. using stakeholders and immigrant leaders from around the community. It would focus on a set number of projects at each time, so a bite-sized recommendation, for example, from here, as opposed to how do we fix housing for immigrants, you know, something that would be too big. It would prioritize immigrant participation, both through best practices and by having an additional intentional, ongoing focus of are we including the right people and are they able to participate fully? And we would provide facilitation and backbone support for this work. So this would lead to the Better Together Committee sitting in this kind of middle area of these three areas, connected with those specialized programs and reporting out to the Immigration Forum to keep the larger community knowledgeable about what was going on. So kind of the important thing to go from here would be finding the stakeholders that would get involved, from advocates, service providers, and most importantly, immigrant community members, and then developing a work plan of different recommendations. These are just examples up there, but five or six projects that could be worked upon until one was achieved and then replaced by something else going forward. Now, I'm very happy to say that we're actually moving forward with this, and the first meeting of the Better Together Committee is going to be tomorrow morning. And so we are already moving forward to bring those people together and to try to talk about these issues strategically. We had participation interest from more than 50 stakeholders representing Catholic Charities, Crescent Community Health Center, the city of Dubuque, Dubuque County, Marshallese and Latina and Asian communities within our region. And so there's a lot of interest, and I'm very excited about the level of participation that's going to happen. This work is also going to be very closely tied with the work of Project Hope that we are doing. So we're going to continue meeting with Project Hope, but as we saw before, economic mobility and poverty reduction for immigrant communities is really a key goal for what we're doing. So these two collaborations are going to really reinforce each other very well. I want to thank you very much. That was a long presentation. I appreciate you all sitting through it. I would like to open the floor to any questions or anything else that anyone has to ask. Thank you.
Thank you very much. It's long, but it's great information. I mean, you've given us a whole lot here to think about, so we appreciate that. Questions? Discussion? Mr. Resnick.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. So a lot of, like the mayor says, a lot of great information, a lot to chew on here. And my question has to do with, you mentioned a disconnect, and that there are cultural differences. You know, we live together, and we want to live together, and, but there are differences. I was looking up some of the, you mentioned some barriers, and one of the barriers that has been mentioned by other people is that the general outlook is not individual, but it's more a communal aspect. And it's not that they necessarily want to be financially individual, you know, you learn in school and you'll get a better job, and then, you know, you take your family and you move into a house with three bedrooms, and it's not kind of, it's not like that necessarily, you know, cultures, and they're talking about the Pacific Islanders as, you know, we're measuring financial conditions. And what generally is what I'm learning here is that they discourage self-sufficiency and independence, and it's all about the community. And rather than, you know, financial conditions, are we talking about, are we measuring respect among, in the group? Are we, how about their happiness here as a community? And we're encouraging, I don't know, would you say Western values when we say, you need to, you know, we're hoping you move up on this chart of making money and having Western values. And I'm not saying the Western values are the top values, but that's what we're measuring here. And have you looked into other, you know, is our Pacific Island community, are they happy here? And it doesn't necessarily have to do with money. So do you talk about that as data?
A number of great questions and great points. A few things. So first of all, to answer your last question, yes, absolutely. And I think the key finding that I saw from this is that a lot of Pacific Islanders very much love Dubuque. I don't know, I know some of you have heard this, but maybe not everyone has, Dubuque is the Midwest capital for Marshallese, the Marshallese community. We have more Marshallese in the city of Dubuque and in Dubuque County than any other county within the Midwest. And if you look at counties over 50,000 people, we have the fourth-highest percent of Marshallese as part of our population of anywhere in the United States. That's incredible, and that number is growing every year, because the thing that we did find from focus groups is that a lot of our Pacific Islanders, they do like it here. They feel that there are great jobs, that there are great schools, and they're excited about educational opportunities. They're not wild about the winters necessarily, but there is a lot here that makes them feel at home. And this is reinforced by the fact that this population continues to accelerate its growth. We're relying on 2021 American Community Survey numbers here. But anecdotally, from talking with Crescent Community Health Center and the Dubuque Community School District, we are seeing more and more Marshallese families move in every week and every month into our community. And we're also starting to see other Pacific Islander families coming. The truth is, the word about Dubuque is getting around within the Pacific Islander community as a place where they can get good healthcare services, they can be able to get connected with good schools where there are lots of job opportunities, and it's producing that kind of draw that is coming forward. Now, so in that sense, I do think that there is a strong happiness, and you're absolutely right, there is a communal sense that I don't think a lot of people know about the Marshallese community. For example, an aunt or an uncle may be very similar to a mother or father within the community, and it is not uncommon for children to move between households and to be able to be shared around. Adoption is very frequent within the community, especially between different siblings, and that can produce very different incentives. However, I will say that one of the things that came up most frequently during focus groups was the desire for good jobs and was the desire to find better work opportunities. And in a lot of conversations, I actually had a conversation down at the Office of Shared Prosperity and Neighborhood Support just today, where there was, Anderson Sancy had been talking with a group of Marshallese who said, we want to get connected with those good-paying jobs, right? We're dissatisfied with what we have right now. How do we get that training? How do we get to those better-paying jobs? Because a lot of them do realize that those poverty numbers are elevated for their community, and they want that to change. So it's a very imperfect answer to a complicated question, but I hope that shows that, first of all, our Pacific Islander community is growing, and that's mainly by word of mouth. But also, there is a need and a desire for that financial growth within the community.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Johnson.
For me, I don't think any of us have all the answers, but you certainly helped us understand the questions. I don't ever get them answered without understanding the questions, so good work. Thank you.
Ms. Russell.
Thank you. At the, Caprice Jones's program, he has something called Community and Change that I talked to him about because I, as a person who's currently not in poverty, wanted more information about better understanding those that are. And so I liked the fact that you have the employer toolkit to help employers understand the immigrant population, but I wondered if, within your book here, if you have something to help educate the general non-immigrant community about the benefits of having immigrants in our community and how to have good connections and cultural competency and all of that. Is that part of your plan in some way?
Yes, I think it is. To be honest with you, it is a challenging answer, because too often, immigration has become politicized, there are very strong opinions on both sides of the aisle about this topic, and it can be difficult to have those conversations on a large level. What has been found to be most effective from a lot of different partner organizations is that individual contact, that being able to share stories. And we've been looking at a number of different programs that might be able to utilize that. For example, there is a program that almost rents out storytellers, like you would check out a book from a library to be able to talk about your personal story or the story of your community. That is an organization, the name is skipping me, but I, skipping my mind, but it is based out of Des Moines, I believe, but are very interested in getting engaged with our Dubuque Marshallese community and being able to expand the program here. There are also a number of other things. For example, there have been projects leading people through the immigration system. I know at the Community Foundation, we've had something kind of showing people what are the different legal avenues for immigration and how long is it currently taking? I don't think a lot of people know, but there are significant wait times for legal avenues for immigration. For example, if you have a sibling living in Mexico and you are a US citizen, that sibling can apply for a green card. They have a legal avenue to be able to get a permanent residence within the US. This is a pre-COVID number, so I'm not sure what it would be, but the current wait time was estimated at 98 years for them to be able to get their permanent residence because of the system of caps and the wait line. And so having those kind of conversations about the legal system can be very valuable. But in general, having our immigrant communities out in the community, being able to celebrate things like Manit Day, or the Marshallese Independence Day, or the Latinx Festival, which is coming up at the end of September, I think those are some of the best ways to really normalize the diversity within Dubuque and to get people that close interaction with each other. But I think it's a great question, and there's always more that could be done.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Farber.
So Alex, thank you for the presentation, and I look forward to reading and learning more. And I love the fact you have all these statistics, which really grounds us in what we have and what we don't have and what we need to accomplish. On a technical basis, I want to talk about like a three-legged stool here where you have broadband access, you have equipment that supports the internet and laptops, and then you have the skill development. In that respect, based on this community, are there opportunities or are there programs to get these people trained up, to get them the broadband access if they're in an underserved area? Or what is going on that perhaps we can step up and further assist, because that's really a basic utility, just like water, if you will, and electricity?
I think that's a great question. I think you will find from the report that there is a lot missing from it. I'm just simply not smart enough to be able to put it all in, but I think it's a great point. I think that there is both a lack of knowledge about current programs and current opportunities that people happen, have, that could be really stepped up and utilized because there is a large lack of connection in certain areas. For example, also from my meeting today, there is a realization that very few people within the Marshallese community know about the assistance with utility payments that is available for low-income families. That would be an enormous benefit for families within the community, but most of them don't have that connection, right? There's that barrier keeping them from learning about the resources and the services that exist. I think with broadband specifically, one additional challenge is a lot of immigrant communities utilize cell phones a lot, but not necessarily computers to the highest regard. For example, Facebook is a fantastic way to be able to connect with the Marshallese community, because many of them are on that. A lot of Guatemalans, I believe, are on WhatsApp right now. But, you know, can that broadband access be used for things like Wi-Fi and for better cellular coverage or for being able to help that? And is there additional training to help these populations become more computer literate? I think those are great avenues to explore.
Right, and there is a program, the ACP program, where they can get up to $30 a month for internet as well. So there's additional education. You know, there's always the fear factor for senior citizens who, over periods of decades, have never really had the skill developed to work with iPhones or computers. Well, it could be the same for this population, and perhaps a program could be thought through to, number one, education, and then, number two, to work with some of the providers that we have, and there are grants and there are capabilities within the federal government for funding as well. And I'm just thinking about the fact that there's corporations that I'm sure would love to have some of these folks work in their environment, but they're going to need a requirement of can they be literate, if you will, in using computers? And 92% of the population today that works needs access to the internet and to a functional piece of equipment to give them that flexibility for emails or whatever it is that they need for their corporations. So I didn't know if that was in there, but it might be something to further develop because it's such a basic need.
Absolutely, a great point. And very quickly, as you speak, it makes me think of a recommendation that is in there that I'm very excited about, which is the idea of leveraging immigrant youth to be able to work to serve their own communities. This could be an excellent area. There is actually a program that Gary Collins from Crescent helped co-design around engaging Pacific Islander youth in civic activities and being able to support them, both to maybe be an academic benefit for them, but also to get them that experience of here's how you might, you know, work with getting, teaching computer literacy to members of your community or something like that. Could be-
And they can help train up. I mean, that is like reach out and touch someone. So I mean, that's very important as opposed to someone else coming from outside of the community. So yeah, if you can find those quote-unquote navigators, connectors, maybe that's something that should be looked at, but that is such a need. So, thank you.
I have a quick follow-up to Susan's question here. So the language, the issues with things being translated into languages about the programs, you mentioned the utility bill discount and things like that. I know that we're working on doing that. Do you have a report for us on kind of where we are or a general idea of where we're at with getting those translated into certain languages and then getting that information out to all parts of the community?
Well, I don't know about specifically the utility bill question, but what we've been looking at transitioning to is video as opposed to the translation of the written word, because they're not, not everybody has that skill to translate. So I can translate, and you might not understand it still, because it's not the way you would do it. So I know we've done some videos, so we could look at that particular question.
Sure, okay.
Yeah, and just to follow on that, too, it's a great point, because, for example, Marshallese is not traditionally a written language. It's much more of an oral language. And we have a growing Guatemalan Mayan population in our community, who often comes to Dubuque not speaking English or Spanish, but Mayan dialects like Isil and Kiche and Kanjibol, all of which are oral languages. And so being able to translate a written flyer into Isil not only is extremely difficult because there are very few Isil translators in the United States, but it's also not the best way to engage with that community because it's not a traditionally written language. And we know literacy within Marshallese and things of that nature is not universal. So I think it's a great suggestion for video.
And am I understanding correctly in hearing this conversation that you're working together on that in general? I mean, I know we have a great public information office, and Randy Gill leads that up, but is that kind of the, are we working with Community Foundation to try and make that happen?
Gisella is actually the Equity and Human Rights Director is the one who is leading that, but I don't know if they're specifically working with you.
Both Gisella and the Office of Shared Prosperity are tremendous partners in the work around that area. They both, I would say, take fantastic leadership roles in these areas. And, you know, for the assessment myself, when one of the recommendations is making sure people pay interpreters and translators, because often it's an important skill that isn't compensated. And it was the city of Dubuque, you know, payment structure and fee structure and their kind of processes that really came in to be used for that because of the good work that people within the city were doing around that area. So yes, we- So yes, we are working together on those.
That's great. So it's good to hear, because I think Ms. Barbara's point is a really important one. There's money to be saved here for people. So if we can make sure that they're getting that information as fast as we can get it to them, that's, I think, a really important step. Ms. Wethel, I see your hand. Go for it.
I did want to just emphasize the importance of workforce in our community, and I don't think there's a person that doesn't understand what a problem that is for our community and communities throughout our country. A lot of assessments, of course, nationally have been done on how do we fix our workforce issue? And from data that I have heard, immigration is a major way that we can approach our workforce shortage, that will be coming even more in the next 10 years as baby boomers find themselves retiring and further out of the workforce. And so when we have these discussions, first of all, I want to thank you because it helps to have our folks at home hear this. It helps us all to have a better understanding of what the work is we need to do here in Dubuque. When I was at the Marshallese Independence Day, one thing that really struck me was that the Sisters Religious came up to speak very eloquently about their experience of employing Marshallese women to come care for them. And it was very moving for me to hear that, working in healthcare and understanding what an intimate interaction that is. They were so grateful for those experiences with the Marshallese population. And so that is such a beautiful example of taking a, an individual, providing them a skill set, say, as a certified nursing assistant, working with them on how they document the things they need to document, which is a very specialized documentation system. But that willingness to have on-the-job education, those kind of examples, I think we need to really lift those up in the community. So I just wanted to say that I know you were there and you shared your information in summary of what you did tonight, but telling the story is so important. So thanks for telling the story.
Absolutely. And I completely agree with you. Actually, Irene Mon, one of the community health workers down at Crescent, who is such an important navigator and leader in our community, started her work with the women religious, right? It was through that opportunity that she kind of gained this connection and this leadership role. And I think there are a lot of stories from within our community about companies being rewarded for that kind of engagement. There is a company a little bit north of Dubuque, up in Garnaville, actually, that made the realization that they were not being connected with the local Latino community and decided to try to fix that. They interpreted all their documents and forms, they hired people in shifts and made sure that there was a bilingual person who could help with training, and they compensated that individual more. And now, I believe, that 40% of their workforce is Latino, and they would hire more if they could find them in the area, right? It has just been a huge success for them, being able to build that. Same thing with the Marshallese community. I'm not a business expert, but this is a community with a very close social network and great communication skills within the community. When employers are able to successfully hire from that community, they have a built-in connection to the rest of it, right? It's a tremendous valuable resource of hard-working individuals that have really benefited a lot of businesses in our area who have been more successful. I think the other thing, too, that we haven't talked about, that might be too much to get into, is also we have fantastic higher education programs here, great colleges and universities. How do we retain and tap into those international students who can be such a fantastic resource for our community? The truth of the matter is, we are, by my best estimates, and don't hold me to this, but Dubuque County is utilizing the H1B visa program at about 5% of what you would expect, given our population. It is just the fact that it is such an administrative burden, so complicated, so challenging, and there's so much risk that comes to it, that it's larger organizations in other states that are taking advantage of that. Part of the discussion in the assessment is, can we build up the capacity so that we can, you know, use things like OPT and H1B visas and other opportunities to keep those international students in Dubuque for longer? It's a challenging, kind of tricky question, but, you know, there's a lot to be gained, I think.
One quick question. And you mentioned the MIT. There's a research paper, you said?
Yes.
Could you please share that with the entire council? We'd really appreciate that.
Absolutely. I'll send it to Jill.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. So the only other question I have, after all these questions, is the, it still relates to workforce a little bit, because we just only gave it a passing mention, but a lot of times we talk about workforce here, we talk about Greater Dubuque Development Corporation, we talk about the Dubuque Area Chamber of Commerce. You already mentioned higher education, but, you know, NICC specifically with some of the programs there. There is collaboration happening on all those levels, too, with this?
Yes, absolutely. 100%. Both as part of the Better Together Committee that we're launching, but during this research project, we actually had a steering committee that helped to guide the research. It was composed of a lot of key stakeholders, and both NICC and GDDC were well-represented and played a crucial role in helping to shape the research. One of the reasons I'm very excited for ongoing collaboration is we found that just from having, bringing all these people together around a table and talking about a systemic immigration issue, even though it was supposed to be guiding the research, it had a lot of benefits, right? There are a lot of fantastic organizations and individuals in this community who, when they get connected together, can move mountains and make things happen. And yes, both, you know, GDDC, NICC, and the Chamber were key in that.
Great. Wonderful. Well, I'm guessing I speak for the entire council when I say this. This has been incredibly helpful. Thank you so much. Clara, thank you for your work with Inclusive Dubuque and for the report tonight. Alex, thank you very much. This has been a very enlightening conversation and very, very useful as we move forward, and great to get it out into the community as well. So thank you.
And thank you all so much for your time and for your ongoing support of the work. It does mean the world to us, and it has, like I said before, personally, it has been very important for me coming to love this city and this community. And so I'm very grateful. Thank you.
Wonderful. Well, thank you. Well, the work for us is not quite done. That does end the work sessions, but we do have a closed session we need to have here. So I would entertain a motion, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
I would that the council go into closed session in accordance with Chapter 21.5 of the Code of I want to discuss purchase or sale of real estate.
Second. Got a motion by Jones, second by Russell. For the record, the attorney that the city council will consult with on the issues to be discussed in closed session is City Attorney Connor Brumman. Trish, will you call the roll, please?
And I'm going to add Attorney Connor Wasson to that.
Please, and Attorney, did I have, sorry, and Attorney Connor Wasson as well. Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Trish, would you call the roll, please?
Russell. Barber.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye. Motion passes 7-0. We are in closed session.